K L P B sound check, K L P B sound check.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the regular Tuesday public meeting of the Calhats County Board of Commissioners. Uh oh. Hope it's not one of those days, Dennis. We have a very light agenda, but let's start by doing We're having a modest technical problem. Is it taken care of? Sounds good. Please join me with the, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Commissioner Weber, how were we doing on the minutes?
Commissioner, I have reviewed the minutes of the meetings from last week, although I was only here from Monday. So I will trust that you've also reviewed them and have made appropriate corrections. With that in mind, I would move that we approve the minutes for July 29th through the 31st.
I'm gonna look to see if there are any hands. We have very few in the audience. I don't see anybody. I call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion does pass. And Commissioner Weber, will you do the honors on the consent agenda, please?
You bet. Today, we have a call for hearings for August 27th to consider whether to establish a no parking zone on a portion of Willow Grove Road near the entrance to the Willow Grove Park at the request of the Port of Longview. So there'll be a hearing for that. We'll hear a report from staff and open it for a discussion from the public on whether this is an appropriate action to take. We have no calls for bids and we have no awards for agreements, contracts and bids to deal with today. So we have some correspondence. Share with you the letters that have come in and gone out from us, one of which is a letter to Robert Griffith, appointing him to a term on the Rural Partial County Library District Board of Trustees representing position one. It's a five-year term that will expire in this, on December 31st, 2029. The Rural Partial County District, Library District includes a few precincts just outside the city limits of Longview. And this district does pay a property tax for library services that by contract provides access for the residents in that district for the Longview Public Library. The next letter is to, has been sent to Mr. Travis Buck, reappointing him to the Building and Planning Advisory Council, representing the environmental community. This is a four-year term that expires in January 31st, 2028. Our Building and Planning Advisory Committee includes people from a variety of different occupations and backgrounds. And Mr. Buck's particular expertise is in designing sewer, onsite sewer treatment systems. So very appropriate to have his input in our building and planning processes. We've sent another letter to Mr. Francis Naglidge, reappointing him to the Building and Planning Advisory Committee, and he represents the Economic Development Council. Mr. Naglidge actually owns and operates a consulting business on for developers hire him to do all kinds of environmental engineering to meet county and state regulations. So his advice on our, our department is pretty critical. We have a letter from Judge Imboden, who is the presiding judge of our district courts regarding the change in management of the Calhats County Probation Department, which had been overseen by the Director of the Jails. And the discussion was that most of the folks that are involved with the county's probation department are have been convicted of crimes at the district court level. And it makes sense that they also deal with those who are on probation. And we felt that was a good shift. So we're transferring that department under the supervision of the district court judges. Item E is a letter from FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And they of course have quite an elaborate contract, a licensing agreement that they oversee for the operation of the dams on the Lewis River. So they keep us fully informed. Among the requirements is a careful design of a wildlife habitat management plan. Obviously, the dams do disrupt the wildlife in that water basin. And so we actually send a representative to serve on an advisory committee for overseeing this wildlife habitat management plan. And then the other, the only other things on the consent agenda are the list of vouchers in the amount of one point, a little over $1.8 million. That includes payroll and benefits. So I don't know if that strikes any questions in anyone's minds on the stuff on today's consent agenda that we can either fully explain or call on staff to help answer your questions.
I will make a comment on the change that Judge Imboden has been supervising, if you will, there. We've had discussions here several times about trying to improve how we handle the youth from, from an A to Z, from from the homeless youth all the way through to those who are in, are in probation. And I, I see this as a step in the right direction. It's actually a little more efficient also. I think if I look forward, I don't see it here, but we have a meeting where maybe the clerk can remember where the ETA will be presented, will be presenting. That is a, we're investigating what can be done. And of course, should be done kind of issue with respect to the juvenile detention center itself. So this is not necessarily an isolated event. We're really trying to improve things. It's because the impacts of our changes are are far reaching into the future. We want to be very careful about those things.
Well, one of the interesting things is that the adult probation department is actually headquartered in the old jail on the fourth floor of the Hall of Justice. The jail, of course, is in a completely separate environment. So supervision is a little bit more awkward because you've got two separate places. And the district court is right on the third floor of the Hall of Justice. So that's, that's another example that that would improve supervision of that, that program. And again, what my colleague is talking about has, has a lot to do with yet another facility, the juvenile detention facility, which is designed for almost 50 guests, if you want to call the juvenile delinquents guests.
Actually, it's four pods of 16 plus some overflow. So it's 64.
So it's quite a bit, but we rarely even have 12. And one of the reasons was the detention facility was designed at a time when kids were sent to the detention facility if they skipped school. And the state changed the laws. They don't get sent to juvie for skipping school anymore. So we're running this facility that's empty most of the time. So we're looking for better ways to utilize those resources. The state law requires us to operate the facility 24/7. And it's empty most of the time. Which I guess is good because kids are not, not, not being locked up. So but it's, it's an expensive use of our resources. So we're trying to make some improvements there as well. Any other questions or comments?
I don't see any. Let me call for the vote to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Let me call for a motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we approve today's consent agenda as, as provided.
I teased you last time. Are you, you say you will make the motion. Are you making the motion?
I did make the motion, yes.
Last chance. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion does pass. The consent agenda is approved. I don't know if I recall a time in my almost eight years here when we haven't had an item in the motion agenda. Do you recall any?
It's been a while. We've, we've had one or two or three, but.
Yeah. So let me move on to the chairman updates. Usually that is the chairman and he's on vacation. But there are some good reminders on there. The Board of Health application deadline is this week on the eighth. That's a Thursday. And the cutoff is the afternoon, half past four. Then on Monday, August 12th, we apparently begin the Board of Health interviews. I'll get back to that in a moment. And then on Wednesday, August 14th, does that sound right? Yes, that's a week. That's, that's not this week, but the following week we'll have Habitat for Humanity and the Veterans Advisory Board on the Wednesday meeting. Those can be very interesting meetings, particularly I think the Veterans Advisory Board should be of interest to many people because there are probably decisions that are going to be requested of us or issues. And it, it deals with how we use the funding that gets collected from our property tax. And the week after that, we've got the Community Mediation Center and I don't see Marcia here, but I expect I might see her then. And then the regular Board of Health meeting will be August 27th. I believe at that time, we should have appointed the new board members and possibly be swearing them in then. At this point, I, I would claim like I have claimed before, how are we going to conduct these Board of Health interviews? I'll speak a little in that we have a in the application, it's different than any other advisory board applications because the Board of Health is different than all the other advisory boards. And on that application, there are standard questions by R C W, we are required to ask the same questions of each of the interviewee, interview candidates. The, the that's okay. What we will do then, I hope, is do follow-up questions. And those follow-up questions can be individual. Even though the, the R C W suggests that the question should be the same for everybody, asking a citizen at large a question that was just asked of a, of an M D doesn't seem to make any sense to me. You've, you've got to tailor the questions to the, the expectations of the value added by the interviewee. That seem all right with you?
Commissioner, do you know what the tally is up to in terms of the applications we've received?
I don't, but that the, our clerk does. I think we were up at 12 last I saw.
Yes, you are correct. We are at 12 applicants.
For the four, for the four, three positions that are up, so.
Yes, we, I can. We have five applicants for the consumers of public health. We have four applicants for other community stakeholders. And three applicants for public health, healthcare facilities or providers.
Thank you.
To, to complicate the issue, probably repeat. The Board of Health is advisory. The current Board of Health has two people who would like to be reappointed. But by law, they will also be part of the questioners. They're part of the methodology where the entire board gets to ask interviewees questions. I can just imagine the one here saying, let's say it's Mr. X on the board says, "Mr. X, how do you feel about Blotty Blower? How would you deal with this?" And he's got to jump around, sit over there and say, "Well, I'm glad you asked that question." Anyhow, I find that a bit humorous. My apologies.
The, the way we've tried to accommodate that unique feature is by making sure the basic questions are available ahead of time and they've been part of the application process. So, so those people have already filled out answers for the different categories that we're going to be talking to them about. So I think making sure that everybody has a fair, a fair shot at the key questions is, is, is appropriate in this instance. But then we'll, you know, follow-up questions are, are always interesting.
Yeah. So we have a very important person at the.
I just need to ask one question. And just like I say, I'm not.
Is the green light on?
Yes, I'll get closer. I didn't ask, I'm looking through this. This is Tuesday, August 20th at 10:00, which would be during this meeting. You're going to have the interviews. Does that mean that the public that are attending the meeting will be able to answer questions that they would like to ask?
Very good question, but the August 20th meeting, is that the one to which you're referring, the, the 10 o'clock?
The Tuesday, August 20th at 10:00, yeah, that would be here.
By then, the interview should have been conducted. Am I, I'm looking over the clerk in case.
Okay. Well, that being said, how do the public ask the questions that they would like to ask?
That is a very good question. I, I think the first order is the public doesn't have a crack at the questions. If you look at the practicality of it, there are 12 candidates. If we gave them each fair time, how much would that be? That'd be 20 minutes each? We're, we're, we're then up to four hours of interview questions. Oops. If, if we have the public chime in, we, we could take a lot more. I look at those things as part of the issues we have to discuss. Your, your feeling there?
What I would suggest is that you get a hold of the applications that have the, the basic questions that they all have access to. And one of the challenges HR tells us, you know, in our interviewing process, we're supposed to be fair. And so those, the questions that people have ahead of time are, are pretty, pretty broad and, and, and all encompassing. But there are slightly different ones for those who are representing the, the other community stakeholders and another set for providers that are, are licensed to, to, to provide health services. And, and then the community at large is the one with the least restriction. So.
Okay, I appreciate that, but.
So, so then if you have a chance to review those questions, if there are still things that you would like to suggest that we ask, let us know.
Okay. It would, I guess just that there are certain questions and, and things that I would like to have considered because I think it's important for the public to have input on the questions. Thank you.
Kelly, how much time are we allowing per interview? You're doing the scheduling, right? And how are we doing that as a one person at a time?
We haven't made a decision yet due to the fact that we're waiting to see how many applications that we receive and how many that you actually want to interview.
And another thing that's pretty awkward for me is I have no pretense that we have any handle on fairness or any handle on an individual's applicability for a job. We try. If that implies that we have to argue against candidate A in the presence of candidate B, I, I start to feel really uncomfortable. In other words, these decisions are going to be made in the public eye. When, when we're hiring an employee, we generally have interviews that are not in the public eye. And then at the end, when we hire someone, depending on the level, it, it may come up here at the board where we hire a director or something like that. In, in, in this case, it's, it's just, I don't like to put anybody down or even suggest that somebody is not up to snuff on some particular thing, yet we have to make that decision. It's it's going to be recorded. It's going to be in the public eye.
Well, and, and then the, the other interesting element to the whole thing is that this health board will serve for the next two years. And you and I will be making decisions that will have a two-year impact and we're gone at the end of this year. There is a part of me that says with almost an entirely new Board of Commissioners in January, aren't they the ones that have the most at stake with creating a health board that, that is, that they have the confidence in to advise to, to, to make those decisions? So I'm kind of tossing back and forth. The law requires that once you're appointed, you stay until your successor is appointed. So even though the terms have expired, they're still members. You know, that's what we've talked about. But again, we don't have the luxury of meeting with each other privately to hash those kinds of things out. We haven't talked about it before. So that's going to be kind of another, another big issue. I'm, I'm not sure we need to be in all fire hurry to recreate the health board.
At the in an ultimate sense, I am quite practical and the effort to gain some additional sense of fairness or something like that very often blows up in one's face. So while I agree with my colleague that we're going to make decisions that will outlive us in the job, I, I would be concerned if I thought there was some shortcoming in our methodology. And I I'm old ears on that, but I, I, I can't imagine that we would do any worse job than, than somebody else.
I mean, having said what I just said, we just approved a consent agenda that included appointing people for the next five years. So we, you know, we do that. Yeah. The, the level of public interest is totally different between the health board for the county and a partial fire, or library district that only affects a portion of the counties. You know, it, it depends on this, on the circumstances. Some of the fun and games that we have as county commissioners.
Yeah. One of the things I want to remind the public of is that the Board of Health does not choose the candidates. They will partake in the interview and they will produce a, a recommendation. And then the Board of County Commissioners themselves will be the ones who will either choose to support the recommendation or take an alternate approach there. I think even the alternate approach could include, well, we don't feel like we have, we think we want to go out again for some other applicants. So that's I think that's a possibility.
And, and for those who may not be aware, we have a, we have another member of the Board of Health who did resign. Her job transferred her out of the area and she represents Native American interests and we don't pick that one. The American Indian Health Council selects that person for. So there's an additional vacancy. That's, that's we're, we're not exactly sure how long that'll be, be, be vacant. So it's, it's, it's interesting. This is a board that's unlike any board, advisory board that, that I've been involved with. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, speaking about the board there and most of the boards is, is this the only board that has open applications during the year? Because we've seen where most boards start in January, first of, you know, the application goes from the beginning of the year and not in the middle. And I think of what happened with the chairman, you know, as you know, he was kind of, whether he was going to get elected or not elected of, you know, you have a, a transition of between two different boards here. So January is where usually, I mean, like I said, I'm not sure how many other boards are, you know, have open applications during the year versus January.
There are two answers to that. There is only modest standardization in the boards. So we have many boards that are operating in a different way. Mosquito Board, the Noxious Weed Board, Veterans Advisory Board, there are all kinds of differences, even the the event center board. And then the, the, the other answer is the bylaws are what control the activity of when and for whom and how long and that kind of thing. And those bylaws, I think are, I consider them still somewhat in the green phase. We've got some inconsistencies in there that we want to address and, but we're stuck with the bylaws as they are here today. As the new board comes on board, they may want to change those things. They may want to align it or not. They may want to do a staggering, which I think was originally the intent on the bylaws, but that didn't work out for some reason. So there's more homework up there.
There's also a historical context and that is the state legislature changed the laws for health boards. And state laws generally take effect July 1st. And so in, in this instance, the appointment of new, new members to the health board, in addition to the three commissioners, was a result of that law, starting with a, a July 1st. And then it just, so once that law became effective, that began the process of selection. So it took us a while to get members picked and the bylaws done. So we're still in the brand new, kind of in the inaugural phase of, of the health board and figuring out do our bylaws align with the state law? We're learning that. I, I, I like the phrase, it's as clear as mud sometimes, that we have lawyers guiding us because the state law is a little ambiguous as well. And it takes a while to sort it all out. So the other thing is this idea that that they serve two-year terms, but they stay in office until their successor is, is written. And that, that's kind of confusing. So.
Okay. And applications can be received at any time. Also, we just had a member of the Planning Commission pass away, plus we have a vacancy. So we're, we're desperately trying to fill that. I don't know that there's no rule of thumb other than we try and advertise and people can go on the website and see what's available.
Is the Planning Commission still, is it January 1st, or is it July? Do you know if the terms are?
I think they're staggered.
They're staggered. So they have very, so it comes up different, different points of time. And are we filling a vacancy or starting a new term? And that's always one of the issues has to be sorted out.
I, I think one thing is we don't really have an administrative or external requirement to align things. And when I, certainly when I'm dealing with human factors, I try to ignore a lot of things and just deal with the human factor. So in this case, we're going to have empty seats. We want to fill. And the last discussion I have is, is this to fill out the seat for another three months or is it for three years?
Right. Okay, thank you.
So let me see if my colleague has any miscellaneous. Did you want to?
No, there's nothing.
Kelly, when's our first interview? Next Monday?
Yeah, we have two interview dates. The first one is Monday, August 12th at 8:00 AM. And the second interview date is Tuesday, August 20th at 10:00 AM.
Hey, despite the fact that we don't know what we're doing, what will 8:00 AM on Monday, the 12th, what will it look like? Are we going to be in this room?
That's correct. We do have the ability for some of the board members to come on Zoom too, if just like every other meeting.
And we'll, this will be obviously open to the public.
Correct.
Do you anticipate all the other applicants will be here?
I anticipate that they will be given time slots and that they will arrive at their time slot and.
As they wish. So 8:00 AM, I should have a name that says applicant X is speaking at 8:00 AM.
Correct.
And when is the next applicant going to be scheduled? How long, how long are the slots?
We have not determined the slots because we don't know how many applicants that we have. So that will be, once we determine how many applicants and which ones are valid that you can interview, then we'll give them the slots.
There is some ambiguity there. I, I understand, but there is a minimum amount of time I think we should spend with each applicant to use my colleague's phrase, to be fair. And.
Yeah. And I believe you guys are talking about 20 minutes.
We're thinking about 20 minutes.
I think I'm pretty comfortable with 20 minute slots. So that would be three possibility on Monday morning.
But if we have a ton of applicants, you know, we might move things around if we have less, I, you know, we haven't made a definite decision yet.
Yeah. So with some shuffling around, three applicants would be an hour plus overhead, which may be another 10 minutes or something.
We do have a scheduled meeting at night.
What was that?
We have a scheduled meeting at night that Monday.
We have a nine o'clock scheduled.
Yes, correct.
You know what's happening at nine o'clock that Monday? That's the normal budget management review. We'd be no place if we didn't have the clerk.
Yes, we have the commissioners that we're going to be looking at their budget, the Board of Equalization, public records, the building and planning and finance.
So it's, it's the commissioner's office would be up
Correct.
first. Well, it's not like we haven't squeezed the time before, right?
That's right.
Do you remember the meeting we had here that began at nine and ended up at like half past two in the afternoon?
Yes. And, and in September, we started our budget hearings, which are multi-hour events too. So we're heading into that budget season.
For, we're going to have. For we're gonna have two new commissioners. For the public. To understand the new commissioners, once they've been elected, they get signed up for a. Two-day course.
An orientation course?
An orientation course. And at that point, they'll teach you. How how you can. Maintain control over your bladder. It's one of, okay, that's a joke. At least somebody laughed. So. Let me turn it over to the public for public commentary there. If the public is interested, I can try and see if Carolyn Fundingsland wants to. Give us any updates that she might have, and that would only be the count or any trials and tribulations she's seen. Anybody's interested in that, hold her hand up and we'll see if the clerk can contact.
I I did. Check in and visit with Carolyn yesterday afternoon and.
It's moving.
And she she had mentioned that just in that. I think it was the Friday before. They had taken in, what did she say? About five thousand ballots?
We were up at twenty-two something this morning, which is why.
She was feeling pretty comfortable. We we should hit thirty percent turnout, which is better than it was looking like earlier on. So. And and she did, she acknowledged the fact that there's a growing trend. Despite the mail-in ballot, reaching people three weeks before their due. People are holding on to them a lot longer and waiting till the last minute. Because we're waiting for more information to come in, especially with. All of the number of candidates for some of the different offices. It's it's a pretty daunting task for people.
Of all the irony, last. Last election. Last year, I guess. There was this big move by some organizations, don't turn in your ballot until the last hour. And. Now it's just the opposite. We we get a lot of exhortation, turn your ballot in early. At least in Calis County, it doesn't make a lot of difference. We have an extremely clean county. Are you contacting? Okay, so let me go ahead.
Just had a question on. The pipeline that I see going in on the on West Side Highway. What what type of pipeline is that?
West Side Highway? Where whereabouts on West?
On on West Side Highway, just. Just north of of like the the Calis Way Bridge and and, you know, going up toward Lexington along between the. Between West Side Highway and the railroad tracks there. It looked like a like a six-inch or eight-inch. Pipeline, and I didn't didn't know if it was a water line or a gas line, or I just was curious.
Is it on the railroad right away? I hear somebody say.
No, it was it was like between the highway and the railroad right away.
Let's promote Susan. Susan, are you? Are you listening to us? Here we go. Go ahead. Are you promoting her to panelists? Yeah.
There she goes.
There we go.
Sorry, that took a long time today to get promoted over. It's not on a county right away, so I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm looking, I pulled up Beacon Hill's. Website to see if it's a project that they're doing. Let me see. Service area map news. Let's see if they have a news release about doing a project out there. The last, their new news releases are late. So I honestly don't know what it is. It could be a water. Beacon Hill Water or Sewer Project. Or it could be something from the gas, but it's on wash dots right away, so I don't have a permit that I can pull up.
Okay, so there's so there's three kinds of quote utilities that that use. The rights of way either along the railroad or along the highway. This, there's a sewer line that goes to the central treatment plant. Which is kind of across the road from the old Longley Fiber Mill. So that comes down from Beacon Hill Treatment Center or the Collection Center. And then, of course, the paper mills have a natural gas pipeline that comes down off of the main line, crosses the bridge. Goes down the right away, all the way through to the mills. Provides the natural gas that they need to operate the paper mills. And then the third one might be fiber optics that go down the right away that serves. Telecommunications services. So could be any one of those. It's not a county project.
Yeah, it looked like either a water line or a gas line, but.
So I just pulled it up. I did find a project that they bid in May. That was a force main project. It looks like it went down West Side Highway and up Nevada.
Up Nevada, okay.
Because it says Nevada Drive Force Main Project.
Is that water?
I believe that's sewer, but I can't get the plans to pull up. Let's see if they're they're still thinking about it. No, I can't get the plans to pull up quickly. So. Sky would contact Beacon Hill Water and Sewer District. They'll be able to tell you about it.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There's a, there's a question online and question is, does the clerk's comment? Does a clerk's comment mean that the board may decline to interview some candidates? No, we. We will interview all the candidates. And it was my comment that. If we don't feel, which is unlikely, but if we were to feel we didn't get adequate. We didn't get applicants that we thought understood the issue, we were, we are not compelled at that moment in time to choose. An applicant. So in other words, we're we're not going to take a default. Again, because the implications are quite long term. Okay, other. Other commentary. If. If there aren't any. Actually, I've got some information that might. Might be entertaining. It turns out because the way our staff meeting works, I presented a little. Bit of this information. And. It's difficult, it's difficult for us to know how we stand without feedback. And hence, that's one of the reasons we really want public participation. And. There's feedback at. All kinds of levels. And one level is, how do we know how Calis County is doing? Can we do a better job? The answer always is yes, but that's. That's the. That's almost a trivial. Kind of answer. So I looked around and. I found Singapore, which has two hundred and ninety square miles of area. And Singapore is located right about just. To the north of the equator. It's maybe, I don't know, half a degree or something like that north. And it's got a whopping three point six. Million in population. So it's pretty densely. Packed. Their their GDP. Is about per capita is eighty-two thousand eight hundred and eight dollars. Well, it should, just call it eighty-three thousand. And that was in twenty twenty-two. In comparison, Calis County has. Eleven hundred and forty square miles and it's got. A lot of what Singapore has in terms of the of of the marine access. The structure of the government is totally. Different. And we managed to. Get a GDP per capita of about fifty thousand. So it's really always, when I see things that are not. Completely, I mean, that that seems darkly distinct. So. If we if we want to progress, we have to ask all kinds of questions like. What is the reason here for that? What can we do that's? Better job. Now, on a per capita gain, we we had opportunities with the. Millennium Bulk Terminal, and my colleague to my left made some very powerful arguments, but it didn't have sway. We also had Northwest Innovations with the methanol plant. Those would have brought in. A fair amount of income, but they were not allowed. So. That that may be part part of the answer. Anyhow, just food for thought there. Another food for thought is. What? Well, I I got myself caught with it. This is. I get people that come up and they want this, they want that. And one of my favorite expressions. And I mean that sarcastically is when somebody says. I pay my taxes. I want you to fund this. And if you look at the overall. Picture on taxation. We run a deficit of approximately now a trillion dollars a year. That's at the federal level. That doesn't touch the blossoming credit card debt that's going on. And. The answer then is your taxes don't pay for whatever program you're you're asking for. So you've seen a focus by me and. Some of my. Colleagues there that we are in favor of. Infrastructure, which is a tool to allow more growth, to allow more income. But we are reluctant just to. Continue to spend to spend. We really don't have extra money. The servicing of the debt for twenty twenty-four is going to be somewhere about nine hundred. Billion dollars. I've got one estimate at about eight hundred and fifty billion. I've got another one at one point one four trillion. When you think about that, that just means we borrow money. To pursue whatever it is we want. And the cost for the borrowing is exceeding now what we spend on national defense. So it it's really up to us to be very careful on how we spend this free money. We've got a disease where we pursue grants of all kinds, thinking it's free money, but. You cannot, as a nation, continue the impoverishment of the nation. Is well under its. Way and the tear in our fabric of the nation is fairly evident. I'll stop here because I think my colleague may wish to say, Arne. You're wrong.
I I think we had a little bit of a discussion before the meeting began about. How frustrating it is to live here in Calis County and not have. A tremendous amount of power and influence over. Things like school policy and, you know, state rules and regulations. So. Our influence over a trillion dollar deficit spending program is pretty limited. Calis County does have an annual budget of roughly a quarter of a billion dollars. And by law, it's required to be balanced. That we have to demonstrate that our revenues. And the expenditures. Are are in balance on a year-to-year basis. And we do have a a tax and slash revenue production system. That meets our basic needs. However, it is true that we get a huge source of revenue from grants from the state and federal government. And even a handful of private foundations. We had a meeting with our. Noxious Weed Board, and they mentioned that they get grants from certain conservation groups on. Attacking noxious weeds out out in the countryside. We also do borrow money. We have not too many, but we have some bonded indebtedness. Primarily based on the purchase. And. The purchase of the landfill that we're paying off by bonds. And the construction of the pipeline that takes the affluent from. Headquarters landfill to the central treatment plant, which, as I mentioned before, is just across the street from the old fiber mill. But again, the revenues that we paid off on the bonds is all part of this budgeting process. And we gather enough revenue from providing that service of collecting. Solid solid waste that were on perfect schedule to pay off those bonds in. About another ten years. They were twenty-year bonds and. We've been at it for about twenty, ten years already, so we're about midway through. So our discretion to go deeply in debt is pretty pretty limited. I mean. We can, we have some borrowing capacity that we we haven't tapped yet, which. You know, unlike the federal government, they tap everything. And including our our grandchildren's future to pay off the the current debt. So with within the authority of the law of the laws that we operate under. Year in and year out, we do a pretty good job of making sure that we have a balanced budget that we live within our means. And. My colleague mentioned about the issue of support for infrastructure. You might not have picked up on it, but next Wednesday. Afternoon, we're having a workshop where we're going to listen to two groups. Who spend money, who spend your money. One is Habitat for Humanities. Who undoubtedly will come to us asking for money, grants to pursue. Affordable housing construction. That's very consistent with our plan to address homelessness. We support the construction of affordable housing. And Habitat, we've already given them some money this year and we're gonna ask for some more. The other group is the Veterans Advisory Committee. Which we have set up to give us advice on the expenditure of funds. That we receive from a tiny portion of your property tax. That is designated for indigent support. For veterans. And it turns out. That there is more money generated by that tiny millage rate on our property taxes than they spend. So they've they have an increasing ending fund balance. And they have the rules and regulations that that limit what what kind of help they can provide. And we've we've said, well. You have this revenue. Are there important services that are being overlooked? By indigent veterans? That we, you know, we have the resources there. It's for that purpose. And so we're gonna hear, I I think, recommendations from them on changing the guidelines we've set up to to. See if there are some needs that aren't being met that could be met because we've got the revenue coming in. So again, infrastructure and human services. Those are kind of the two issues that we deal with in terms of spending. The Health Department has access to a lot of public health funds. And we have the health board that we're struggling with. They're the ones that ultimately should be making recommendations on to us. On the the kinds of programs that would meet ongoing public health needs.
The the interesting thing about the Veterans Advisory Board is that actually they're almost. The way they operate. Is they take care of their own business for the most part. They have their bylaws. They decide what what things they're gonna support. And the amount. By which you're gonna support it. And yeah, they're building a surplus up and that has caused. And yeah, they're building a surplus up and that has caused strain because a pot of money, in this case is about 800,000, invites people to say, well, I could use that money. There's a little bit of a tendency to want to spend something there. That is something that we'll find out about in in that meeting. But I I have to tell you that in all the time I've been here, I think they're one of the most sensible operating, most sensible advisory board and pretty much operate on their own. They make their own decisions. You want to get your first month's rent paid for and you're a vet, you go to them and they'll decide. They they try to be sure to apply things to those who truly need it as opposed to just a blanket open thing, which which is a good thing. On the bonding, I think that it's really important is it, it's kind of like you've got your house and you've got equity in your house and you take a loan on there to invest it in something that is going to produce further wealth for you. That's probably not a bad choice to do. But if you chose it, so you if you took out the loan so you could take a vacation to France, that is not such a good thing. Well, our bonding, the choice almost becomes easy. In if you are growing, if you're a municipality and you're growing and you need a larger sewer treatment plant, you have the need that will be actually paid for by the consumers in the future. So the one way to do that is to the chicken and egg issue, you got to build it so that they can use it, but you got to build it with the with the dollars that will come from the proceeds from the from the youth. So that's, I think, a very sensible use for the utilities is to amortize the cost over the future. That's what a bond does for you. Anyhow, there's lots of interesting to say in.
So so last week, we received a letter from the Port of Woodland announcing a new program to finance capital improvements as they do infrastructure improvements to try to attract businesses to the community. And that's something ports do. But they're using a a new feature called tax increment financing. And they're not taking out a bond, but they're designating the future value of the the they're going to, they're going to build infrastructure improvements that will raise the value of the property. And they're going to pay for them in the future by the increased revenue from the property taxes from these new improvements. It's it's not quite the same thing as as bond funding. And it's it's there's enough certain amount of trust that the Board of Directors aren't going to misuse those dollars. And they're actually going to meet the targets of increased property assessments because of the improvements that they make. I think they're the first in in Callis County to formally adopt a tax increment funding program.
But that's an interesting thing, and we did send a letter to support the request. My personal view on it is that I'm a little nervous about that. In fact, probably a lot nervous, but standing in the way of progress for my uncertainties isn't the right thing. Yes, that'd be fine. Yeah.
Yeah, sure. We just wanted an update on how the election returns came in yesterday and you and I talked a little bit last yesterday before you had the the big news from Monday's collection.
Yeah, really, really terrible returns. We were sitting at 16% turnout last Friday. I didn't think there was any chance that we would break 30%, but as of yesterday, we've received an average of 800 to 1300 ballots every day of the election until yesterday. So we got 4,600 ballots yesterday, which brought us up to 23%, I believe. And if we receive from today's pickups and then our collection tonight at eight o'clock at the ballot boxes, if we received 5,500, a little more than 5,500, we'll break 30%, which is kind of statistically average. We always say that we double our numbers in the three days leading up to election day. We were at 16% on Friday. So if we hit 30, 32%, roughly doubling our numbers. So makes sense. Terrible turnout, breaking 30%, terribly low turnout for a presidential year in a primary, even though it's a primary.
I've seen on social media a lot of chatter about who do I vote for? How do I know this or that? And that's in the past hours. So I think your 5,500 will get hit.
I think so, too. We are busy. I don't, I don't know why it picked up just yesterday, but it did. We've we've actually had a lot of contact with voters. A lot of comments about how they find information. But not a lot of turnout. But now we're actually seeing foot traffic yesterday and today. So hopefully, who knows, maybe we'll break 32% turnout.
What's the highest you've seen in?
Well, in 2020, in the primary, we had a 55% turnout, which we all know, 2020, everybody kind of had a little time on their hands. So it was a different time. But even back in 2016, the turnout was high as well. So I can't really explain the low turnout.
I I can't help but think that as unlogical as it is, it's a lot to do about the enthusiasm people have at the national level for the presidential race. And with the the president, the former president being the only folks at the top of their ballots, the enthusiasm level was pretty low.
You're right.
And then all of a sudden that changed on the on the Democratic side. And so there's a huge amount of enthusiasm building that hadn't been there just a week ago. So except those candidates aren't on our ballot. So.
That's one of the top questions. There is some confusion. So the very top question is where do I find information? But the very next questions are, where's president? Why isn't president on my ballot? And then where's county commissioner? They're very unimpressed with the fact that county commissioners run by their internal director districts or internal internal commissioner districts. So they were looking forward to participating in commissioner races. It's not on their ballot. So if they're missing president, the very next question is, why don't I have county commissioner on my ballots?
Interesting. A comment you made reminded me of my friend that I've mentioned from time to time. He's no longer alive. He was Igor Ushakov, who was from the Soviet Union. And he was actually a member of the Communist Party there, fairly high up in the in the organization, so high up that he could leave the Soviet Union without an escort to come to conferences in the Western world and go back. Igor was a very smart, I mean incredibly smart technical person, but he's also a very practical person and a Renaissance man. I have a painting that he that he gave me of his own that's hanging up in my house. Anyhow, why I bring it up is because when I met him circa 1998, we got along pretty well quickly and he he said at the time, some amazing things to me. One of them was Pravda would be just totally envious of the propaganda machine in the United States. And I remember asking him a question because in college I had a, I took Russian language class and we had a little booklet. There was a Russian scientific stories, more or less. And one of the stories was it said, you know, Yuri Gagarin, first man in space, got back down to Earth. And when he got back on Earth, it was Leonid Brezhnev who just embraced him and congratulated him. And we all know it was Nikita Khrushchev who did that. So I asked Igor, what's what's the deal here? You know, what's the story behind the story? And you know, his answer is the most precious one. I will never forget. Very heavy accent. I don't know. You must understand, I'll stop. You must understand Russia is a land of an unpredictable past. Think about that. That is a flabbergasting statement. So part of what's going on, maybe the delay and that people are trying to figure out what is real and not real. Every day is a new announcement. So and so had a child by the babysitter or, you know, it just goes.
And because there is, well, in some precincts like mine, there were zero local issues. And people are confused, thinking that a separate ballot is going to come with local issues because they got the local voter pamphlet. Where's their local issues? And they got this state ballot with no voter pamphlet. So just it it's almost like a perfect storm.
That that is particularly true for those in the third Commissioner District because there aren't any candidates up. But they will in in two years.
We've actually had people come in, say they didn't receive their ballot and they've got a voted ballot. And and we we say, you've returned your ballot. Do we need to pull that envelope? And they say, but that was our state ballot. Where's our local ballot?
Wow.
You will be here till about nine this evening?
Yeah, 8:45, nine till the last ballot box collectors arrive. But we'll have a better idea on turnout. We have collectors out right now. We'll get through our first incoming mail of ballots from those collections, probably around two o'clock, I'd say. So I think we'll get a a much better idea of our final target kind of this afternoon around two o'clock to see what our numbers are. Again, we're looking for around 5,500 to 6,000 to just break 30%.
Isn't it true that voters who mail their ballots today will probably not have them counted? Because the post office doesn't postmark.
I just tell them, don't. Yeah. Unless you walk into the post office and you watch them give that postal endorsement, don't do it. Don't take a chance. You can't rely on any collection box to be postmarked with with today's date. So always return it.
Collection boxes that your office operates.
Yes, please leave it.
That's the best way to make sure your votes counted.
Or come in in person, drop it off.
Yeah, a a long those lines, could you tell the public again how you manage the pickups at the collection boxes?
Yeah, in case there's any interested parties listening, Callis County is pretty unique. We've implemented what we we've coined a ballot box buddy program. We send our collection teams to every box with a Republican and a Democratic observer. And they're paid because first we do background checks and we vet them. And then they also have to, they have a job. They're not just there to watch. They have an actual checkoff sheet. And they're, they don't touch any ballots, but they are there to ensure that the box collectors do their job. They followed every procedure, the boxes emptied, and those ballots are transported securely back to the elections office. So it's hugely popular. It actually provided a relief for us on staffing. We have eight ballot drop boxes in the county on election night. I have to send a minimum of two people to every box to empty it. So with the new team, I'm allowed to send one staff member with a buddy, Republican and Democratic buddy. So I've got the minimum number of people. It's really eased our staffing levels on election night. Very helpful.
Now, in terms of Republican or Democrat, are there does that include the liberal Republicans and the social Democrat? I'm laughing, of course.
I'll I'll tell you that we have a sign up list and I send the sign up list to the chair of each party for them to approve. So not just anybody can sign up, the party chairs know who have signed up and they approved the list.
Got it. Thank you.
But this is actually generating a lot of comments with the public. The public seem to really like it because they're wearing bright green reflective vests that in reflective letters on the back say, election observer. So people are honking and they're stopping and they're saying, great job having observers. So we're getting a lot of positive feedback from the public on it.
It's amazing what a two years difference makes.
It it is. And I, we just had our elections conference in June and they asked me to do one of the breakout sessions on this ballot box buddy program because it's generated a lot of noise amongst auditors. So I I showed them pictures. It's pretty undeniable how how popular and how well it works in our county, in our demographic.
Well, thanks for the work you do. Your staff is top.
Thanks. I I have a mighty small but mighty team. Yeah, they're fantastic. And with the help of the parties.
So 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 back in the olden days, when I first started voting, those that team was at every single polling place. Yeah, Democrat and Republican, I think they they didn't use observers. I think they called them judges. And as well as the poll.
And they were paid.
Processors, right?
Yeah.
And and so the number of people involved in elections was much greater. We voted by machines. That was turned a little lever for each each ballot position.
I saw those when I first started. They they were still in storage. I saw those. Pretty incredible.
The old fashioned way of doing things.
Yeah, those workers that used to be our party members and judges at the poll sites, they transitioned in 2005 when we went entirely vote by mail. They transitioned from those positions, some of them anyway, into what we call our opening board now. So those those party members work in another capacity in the office as opening board members, Republicans and Democrats, working in teams to actually open the ballot and do the long and tedious task of inspecting front and back every ballot. Required by law, HumanEye has to look at every ballot front and back to look for any anomalies that would prevent it from scanning. So they perform and they love it.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
So I've got one last item I'm curious about. We had talked earlier about Sisipagapura versus Callis County in comparison. And I know in the audience, we have Tim Shea, who is very facile with things in the Philippines, having just come back. Do you, did you want to make any commentary at all? You see how that works?
Yep, I saw how that worked.
One thing that I said the last time where when I was here and I got back, you weren't here, so I'll give it to you is you know what I noticed is in the area that I was in, their infrastructure work was tremendous. I mean, it was everywhere you looked, they were doing something, building a bridge, a road, both drainages, all this stuff going on. I mean, even the even the cockfighting arena was now all cement, whereas when I went there before, it was just a wooden old thing, looked like it would fall down. Now it's, I mean, everything they got is just happening infrastructure wise. And that's the thing that probably impressed me the most about.
Well, you told me about or what I got or understood, the the sense of entrepreneurship that kind of seemed pretty that kind of seemed pretty stark to you in terms of, wow, it's right there before me.
Yeah.
We have, I, I had talked at the staff meeting a little bit about not having an employee mentality. You know, when you accept the paycheck, you want your organization to succeed. You're not there for yourself. You're being paid, but you really are being paid to, to do what you can. And there's a difference and that's why some employees advance and others will just not, they're just not as interested.
As far as the entrepreneurship goes, and I think, uh, you know, especially where I was at, there, there's no large stores. Everything you buy is at a store run by people that live at the store. And the first day we got there, when it went over just around where we were at and it was late at, at, at local time, I think it was one or two in the morning or something. But, you know, they got some all night burger stand or something. I don't remember what we're going for, but there was people that were, that sell things beside the road, basically. And they're just sleeping on the street right there. You know, they got somebody's awake, you know, to watch the store, but the rest of the family is all just right there. And, you know, that's commitment to your little business. You know what I mean? It's like, uh,
Well, they don't have much choice, right?
No, not really. You know, and it's like, uh, the town where I was at, uh, which was far away from the metropolitan centers. You know, this is out in the country. It's like Kelso, you know what I mean? And, uh, every, every store sold something specific. It's kind of funny because I wanted to get a crescent wrench because I was going to help fix a little thing. And I had to go to three different places. Nobody even knew what it was at the other places. You know, you find the land in the store where it's like, oh, a crescent wrench. Yeah, we got one right here, you know? But the other places were like, what's a crescent wrench? I mean, it's just that categorized.
Well, Tim, I'm, I'm curious. You said there was an awful lot of spending going on with capital improvements, a lot of construction. So immediately I'm thinking, well, who, who pays for that? Where's that money coming from? Is, and the Philippines is, uh, is a, uh, a military ally of the United States. When we're talking to each other, you know, there's a long, long history with Philippines and, and the United States. And then it suddenly occurred to me is, are there elections coming up? In democracies, there is a tendency to spend a lot of money just before an election.
Yeah.
To demonstrate that you're doing something.
Well, I was there.
We certainly see that at the national level.
I was there 10 years ago and, uh, as an example, the house that I stayed in most of the time while I was there was my wife's sister's house. And they just had this built. It's, it's, and it's a nice house. We went 10 years ago to look at the place. So most of the trip to that place was on a dirt or a trail. And you had to dismount and walk the last bit. Now there's a paved road all the way. And I mean, in all this little neighborhoods area up on the hills there. And it's like, they're just a very short distance now. You might call it the driveway is dirt now, but, um, and houses all over the place. I mean, it's like, uh, it's not, when we were there, 10 years ago, there was one house out there. And now it's just a, a neighborhood.
That's what infrastructure will do for you.
Yeah, they built the road and then the people build their houses, you know, because they can get to it. And, uh, um, I noticed, and I, I can't read the, the writing, but I noticed in all these projects that I went by, there had a sign, a banner of these two politician people. And, you know, your tax dollars at work was basically what the sign was saying, but can, you know, and here we are, you know, helping you with your money. And so, uh, um, they pay property tax like we do. You know, it's the same kind of structure, I believe. Uh, I try to ask them about these things, but it's like, I don't know how to describe, you know, people are just kind of like, oh yeah, we pay tax, you know? It's, it's not like what percentage or it's easy to see where it goes though. I'll tell you what, their, their roads are in fantastic shape and, um, I, and I saw it going on everywhere, you know? It's like, uh, we take the scooter and go for a ride out in the mountains and stuff. And, uh, you know, we ended up on this one road, went for miles and miles till we got to the, the construction area of it. Brand new bridge across the big ravine and, you know, you could see more road going up that way. You know what I mean? It's like, uh, they're not, it was.
How was, uh, the appearance of food or the availability of food? Was that?
Yeah, there's nobody hungry where I was at. There was, uh, I think they had two homeless people that I saw. There was one guy that was on our street in the town street. Parents lived in town, so we were down there sometimes. And, uh, there's apparently one guy that was, has been there forever. And, uh, he never said anything to anybody. He looks disheveled, you know? But his, his, uh, what his contribution, I guess you might say, is he keeps the ditch clear. You know, that's what he does all day. He just sits there and clears out the ditch. And then I noticed that the vendors around there would give him something to eat or drink, you know? When he looked at it, but I, I never saw him say a word, never, he, he certainly didn't accost anybody, you know? And, uh, another thing is, uh, in all, in that time there is, uh, never saw hypodermic needle. Didn't see a hypodermic needle anywhere. Didn't see one on the street. Didn't see anybody shooting up. Didn't see any kind of crazy drunk or drug use at all.
You know, back to my food question, the number I've gotten on the, from the internet is that the U.S. spent a hundred and forty-seven billion dollars in twenty twenty-three for the SNAP program. That seems like an astounding amount of money where I think food is more plentiful in the U.S. than any place else I've ever been. There's something, there's something not.
They, they had, I, 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 I watched a little bit of the news. They had some food program stuff going on, but it wasn't by the government. They would just report on, you know, this church or this organization. And they had, you know, here's the line and they're all getting food, you know?
They weren't getting the monster drinks or?
No, no, they didn't get it. They didn't have a card. You just showed up with your little bag and they give you some rice and some whatever else they were giving you. And it, but that wasn't by the government. That was totally private. Which, you know, brings me to a point is, uh, it's written into our tax code for the churches to be exempt from taxes. It, it, it's in the IRS code that they are supposed to be the ones doing this stuff. You know, all this homeless stuff should be taken care of by the churches. That's how they get their tax exempt status. If you want, I can, you know, shoot you a copy of that over one of these days.
Well, I, I, I think it's a little bit more accurate. There's this nifty little phrase in the First Amendment about no establishment clause and no interference with the free exercise of religion. That's why they don't have to pay taxes. Cause you pay taxes.
Funny, you know, I always.
Government has control.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that point, but I've had it pointed out to me by somebody else and they showed me the code. They showed me the writing of it. It's not like they told me, I read it. It's there and it specifically mentions homeless and hungry. And it's, it's in the IRS code.
Most, most organizations that do that have tax exemptions.
But if you're getting tax exempt, then you should be doing that job.
Well, I'm, I'm getting a little antsy. Maybe time to turn the chair over to.
Sure, sure. And, uh, well, you guys called me up here, so.
Oh, we did, and I completely appreciate it. We are upset you didn't bring us back any lumpias, but that's a different story.
Let's revisit the port of Woodland and, uh, the sums of a hundred or two hundred million or whatever you talk about that they might want to invest out there and how they're going to fund that. The value of, of, of course, of investments in infrastructure is, one, what is the cost to do it? The other value is what is the cost to replace it? But in the business environment is that how much income will it generate? It doesn't matter who, how much you spent on it. It's what does it generate? And so I see a giant sucking action coming up in the port of Woodland because they're going to put an investment out there and then they're going to invest, they expect the county to make all of the infrastructure connections to try to get customers and people to that location out there off of the freeway and whatever. We're not going to drop balloons in or we're not going to drop parachutes in. Some way or another, they're going to have to get product in, product out, people in, people out. And as we talked at the last meeting, our planning, our comprehensive planning kind of stinks for that whole area and for our county and for our state. So that we need to make a sucking action at the state level in planning for this event. So we, the citizens of Calitz County, aren't absorbed into the sinkhole between the port of Port Woodland and the infrastructure of transportation and everything else.
It, it is, it is one of those challenges. As long as we have increasing population, you know, we have to be aware of the, the need for job creation. Government is not the employer of last resort. I mean, that's not the way our society is, is set up. In fact, we actually have policies that discourage poor people from actually getting jobs. But that's a whole, that's a whole different welfare question. But the thing that county governments do have a responsibility for is the kind of infrastructure, particularly with roads in unincorporated areas. To do exactly what you're saying is one of our, our basic functions is to, help connect businesses with markets and resources that provide that transportation network. And which, uh, which is one of the reasons why the property owners in the unincorporated areas have the road tax portion of the property taxes. Because, uh, the, the whole, the whole economic system of providing for justice services and law enforcement and public health depends upon have a, having a growing economic base to generate those revenues. But you're absolutely correct. You can go overboard and you can make, you can, you can spend way too much money. And then the, the, the follow-up costs trap you.
Okay.
That's one of the challenges that school districts have. Because they borrow a lot of money, they build buildings. And, you know, within five to 10 or eight years, mechanical problems start happening and the, you know, buildings deteriorate. And then they have, they have to go back and borrow more money and they're still paying off the old bond issue and it's pretty controversial. We have to be careful. It's not, we don't have carte blanche. And, uh, but I, you know, I, I think part of our responsibility as county commissioner is to make sure that the roads are maintained to, to keep our economy functioning.
Right, well, I just remind us and you and future county commissioners to say, the value of that investment out there, one may be for tax basis, you can collect taxes on it. But the other is that the value is not on what was invested in it. The value is what is it turning out in a form of economic return to the citizens and the people?
Absolutely. When I, when I first became a county commissioner, uh, the county was working with a volunteer organization called the Calitz Game and Anglers on a project that some members had to build a public shooting range. And that proposal was originally designed and described as totally volunteer. The volunteers would take over the operation and maintenance of a shooting range. They sold lifetime memberships to the, the, the access to the shooting range. But before they were able to get the permits, they needed permission from the county to allow them to build on a piece of county property. And that meant there had to be public hearings and that meant the local neighbors were up in arms because they did not live out in the countryside to listen to shooting going on all the time. And so there, there was a, a hearings process, a hearings examiner looked at it and basically redesigned the project and added about a quarter of a million dollars in costs to baffle, uh, to, to muffle the sound. And a lot of excavation work that the original plan didn't have. And this volunteer organization got saddled with a quarter of a million dollars in additional costs that they didn't have the revenue to, to do. So the county said, well, tell you what, we'll loan you the money. You pay it off each year once you get it all in, in operation. And so that's what happened. The county had to scrape together a quarter of a million dollars to make available to it. Once they accepted those public funds, everything changed. Because now they had to be accountable for the use of those public funds. And they weren't used to doing that. And so we had a real battle with them to fulfill all the proper notification rules and disclosure rules on how they utilized the, the public funding. Where they were going to do everything with volunteers, now they had to go out for bid and get contractors, go through a whole bunch. And of course the costs kept going up. But the previous commissioners, before I came in, aboard, signed an agreement with this group that the payback was this very minuscule amount. It was like it would never pay off the, the quarter of a million dollars. And it was like, we have this agreement, they, there's, they're even struggling to pay that little bit off. And I, I finally talked to the retired commissioner that I replaced and said, what were you guys thinking? Signing an agreement in which you knew the loan would never be paid off? And they said, and he said, we never intended to have to pay off that loan, but we knew they were pumping in vast improvements to that property from a sand pit. It was on the dredge boils. And at some point in the future, when it was all built, we're going to have it, the property assessed and the increased in value would allow, give us an excuse then, if it was enough, we could forgive the loan, not break the law. The county has the increased value of property and, and, uh, so we ended up doing that in about two thousand. Was it after you got, it was after you joined us? We finally did that assessment. Turned out the value of the property was estimated at one point two million. And that was a loan that we were, we were able to, 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 uh, you know, forgive. And, uh, the reason I say that is we're talking about this whole thing of increasing the value of the property, is an asset to the community. We have that facility and I think it's a pretty popular facility. And the baffling and the rules and restrictions worked. The neighbors now are great supporters of, of the, the gun range because it's a, it's been a good, a, a, a good service. However, the infrastructure costs are continuing to grow. The Toodle River is eating away the bank that is supporting Toodle Park Road, the access to the shooting range. And we're having to look at the reality of building an entirely new access road, not only to the shooting range, but to some of those residents are going to be, are going to lose their access road. So it's a pretty dynamic process. Things, things change and we have to adapt and take advantage of what we can make a change of and recognize that we can't change everything we would like.
Right, so the question still gets back to, still gets back to, if you have a one point two million dollar assessed value asset sitting there, is it a liability or an advantage? If it is not covering its costs in some way or another, its costs to the county or whoever has sponsored that one point two million dollars, then it's a liability rather than an asset.
So, so right now the expenses are being taken care of, the operating expenses for the facility because the Calitz and, Calitz Game and Anglers are volunteering their time.
But you said operating us, there's the infrastructure costs to maintenance.
And they came to us about too long ago, probably about three years ago and said, you know, we're barely making ends meet to keep the program going. But we know we need to paint the facility and maintenance and, and the garbage and all that stuff. And oh, by the way, Calz County, you own it now. You need to start doing some. You need to start doing some of the maintenance. And sure enough, our parks department does, does do maintenance work on it. The agreement with Calis and Game Anglers expires at the end of next year, right? And we don't know what's going to happen.
I think what you were saying can that the, the shooting range is a good example of what, of what you're saying and the caution. I'm pretty sure if we loo- look at how much the county has in it and how much the county has gotten out of it from a tangible, tangible aspect, I'll bet we're underwater.
Right. It's a liability.
Intangible aspect, that's something you'd lay on the table and discuss. You want to like a, a like, like a park is typically justified on intangibles. The history of the, of the shooting range was, was handled. But there were a lot of things that were ugly and done ugly. It was because someone really wa- 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 wanted to have it done and they sold everybody a bill of goods that we were going to be the shooting center of the universe. There would be massive competitions here uh, like in the Olympics, the, 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 the trap shooting, that kind of stuff. And we've done the best we can and, uh, my colleague has addressed some of them. Some of the other things we've done, we are responsible for law and justice. They, the sheriff's office needs a shooting range. The, what they had at Crystal Pool was pretty tenuous. So we, we're trying to make the best out of it, but your point is spot on. And this may be a poster child example. It should never have been built. We have a problem now at the end of the, of the deal with the game and anglers. What do we do with it? We can claim it's worth one point two million dollars, but who's going to buy it? For what? For what? What purpose? A business is not going to touch it because you can't make a living out of it. And that's one of the first clues where government should not go where private enterprise is unwilling to go. Of course, private enterprise should not go and interfere, I mean, government should not interfere with private enterprise. Bottom line, they shouldn't go into any of the business stuff to start with.
Right. So in a year, as you were saying, when their contract is, or their lease is up, it'll be a very interesting position to say, well, is there a private enterprise that wants to buy it that will provide the same service? And then that'll be based on the kind of the price that they're willing to pay for it for what the value of it is in terms of business and not in just plain asset that is depreciating or falling apart. And so the city of Longview had, has had the similar discussion going on for the firing, shooting building and range that they were talking about putting in there and a whole lot of discussions about back and forth and the policeman having to go up to Chehalis and schedule special event or special times and everything else to get their quote, practice, required practice in to maintain capabilities. So anyway, there's a whole lot of issues in the mix.
It, it ends up being, wha- what does the public accept as a, a reasonable intangible value that we're, that we're willing to pay taxes on? You can make the same argument.
And your park.
There's no reason.
Example was a good one.
Parks.
If you treat it as a park, then similarly that you're going to take care of it, then what is its tangible value to the community and the constituents?
The interesting thing is probably the best, most comprehensive park system in Calis County is privately owned. Privately owned by Pacific Corps. All the parks along the Lewis River are privately owned and operated. But.
That's a little.
It's only because they're making a heck of a lot of money off of those hydroelectric dams. And that's part of the price they pay for the privilege of damming up the rivers. And it's part of the federal government's licensing agreement. So that's not an exact comparison with private enterprise.
But there's another example, Hofstadt Bluffs.
Oh.
It's a very sad story for the county.
Yes. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'm pretty well pooped out. How about you?
Oh, I'm.
Any others?
I'm willing to answer any questions, but. Or we can adjourn.
You're making a motion to adjourn?
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Checks, make sure we don't have any other hands up.
I, I've been looking. I haven't seen any hands up. I, I, I appreciate your indulgence and the public's indulgence. These are just things that go through our mind and when we're trying to decide on things that may seem obvious to the public, it's not so obvious. We're spending your money. We're, we've got to look short term. We got to look long term. Is that a proper bond or is that not a proper bond, you know? Could we get by with the old morgue or do, do we need a new morgue? And, and this goes on and on. Thank you. Uh, we are adjourned.